Pam, did you send this out to them?
Did anything hit to you or vote on it?
Okay. I didn't knock that pound down that thing.
We're ready, Dr. Burrow.
Ready?
Yep, we're ready.
Regular monthly meeting Anderson County Board of Education will come to work. Don, will you lead us to the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Resolutions?
I have none.
No resolutions? I'd like to introduce our new board members. Scarlett Ayers from Clinton. Sully Sexton from Anderson County.
Yeah, you're not getting off that easy.
I'd like to thank the board for this opportunity. You all tasked us with, had some fantastic student board reps in the past. Want to continue that tradition and went out and found two more fantastic students at our schools. It's not hard to do. We got a lot of them. So, but I'd just like to introduce first from Clinton High School is Ms. Scarlett Ayers. She should come up. Scarlett is in the 12th grade. She is 17 years old. Her favorite class is AP Biology. Favorite teachers, Ms. Dunn, Mr. Scarpino, and Ms. Scrambling. She's considering to go to school at UTK, UT Chattanooga, Boston University, Vanderbilt, and LMU. So she's going to narrow down there. Wants to study biochemistry and go pre-med. She plays piano, garden, loves art, and she's part of the Snapdragon's Club, which is our environmental club on campus at Clinton. Bark, which is my favorite club. It's bettering animal rescue in the Knoxville area. HOSA and ASAP. Next is Mr. Sully Sexton. Sully is in the 12th grade at Anderson County High School. He is 17, but will be 18 on Saturday. So I gotta put that in there as well. It's hard to pick a favorite class, but probably US History. Mr. Sexton's favorite teacher is probably Mr. Hall. He's considering Tennessee Tech, NTSU, and Maryville College. Also wants to study pre-med. Interests are football and his superlative is best hair on AC campus. We all voted on that, but no, just kidding. Involved in SGA. He's actually the president, National Honor Society's the president as well. FCA, youth leadership, and football, so he doesn't have much time for anything else. So, Mr. Sully Sexton.
All right.
Stand there, we'll swear you in. Did you solemnly swear that you will uphold the Constitution and the statutes of the United States and of the state of Tennessee and that as a student, board member of Anderson County, you will faithfully execute the position which you have appointed? By the authority vested in me within Anderson County Board of Education, I declare these two board members to be duly appointed.
Good.
Good job.
Fortunately, I know some of Dad and Granddad pretty well. If you want to sign them up for it.
That's probably the worst you'll have to go through.
I didn't fix my daughter's back.
And that's a problem.
Dr. Burrow, let's get a picture with you and I. And you. You can't even take your hand with the man.
All right, big smile. No drinks.
Yee-hoo!
Other recognition of guest. Being none.
Before we talk about the agenda, I'd like to add an item to the agenda.
Okay.
And that is discussion of the mask in our schools.
Anything else? Did you have something to add?
Oh, now you've asked me that, I forgot about it. No, I don't think I did. I don't think I'm good. Yep. I remember later.
Approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
With, so moved with the addition.
I'm sorry?
Moved with the addition of...
With the addition of Mr. McCamey. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Approval of the consent agenda.
Move me approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Move second approval consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Pam, could you send us a copy of the football schedules? I tried to find one and couldn't. Executive approval, there was none this month. Comments from the chair, there are none this month. Comments from the student board members. You all are welcome at any time to, after you get your feet wet, to anything you would like to bring before the board, you're welcome.
We actually like you to bring a report every month, kind of what's going on at the schools, and bring it back to us.
Anything good?
Yeah.
Directors' report.
Dr. Burrow, I'll be short. You know, today was our first full day for all of our students. We're right now at 6110 was last camp, which is up almost 240 something students from last year.
Good.
Which is good. Our kindergarten is busting at the seams. Our, in our fourth grade, those things, we've had to add at about three of our schools. We've had to add some teachers where we had them positions left in the budget. But we've had a great start of school. I've been out to all the schools. I've like, three schools, and I'll be, I will have visited all schools twice. Was in classrooms today. Our kids are in classrooms. They're engaged, already learning. And, and like I said, it's, school, school is here and it's ready and we're excited about it. I have got a lot of comments from people out in the, that work for us. They're really appreciative of the board for the 4% pay raise that they got and the staff and all of the step raises and the extra funding in our retirement system. They're excited about that. And, you know, just kind of a, we're working on our S R 3 fund. We'll be bringing that back to you next month to approve that. We're in the, we have a PO now for the grade work at Clinton High School. Hopefully that'll start any day of the softball field. They were rolling the, all of the material for the Clinton High School and Clinton Middle School football field is there. All the turf and everything there. They unloaded it this week. They started working on the field again today. So we are very hopeful that by the 26th, we will have a field there and we'll still have some things to do with it, but we're excited about that. There's still a lot of projects going on. But I will say this, our custodial staff and maintenance staff did a great job this summer. Our schools look fantastic. They are in the best shape they've ever been in. I can't say enough about them. We had, we kind of had our end of the year celebration Friday before last. We fed them steak and chicken and baked potatoes and all the fixings and just a time to get together and say thank you for what you do. So, again, I think there's a lot of good things going on in Anderson County. And that's all I have.
I'd like to thank you for that letter you sent out to the parents and board members and the staff. I think that's gonna help.
Do we need to vote on that? Do we need to vote on this letter?
No, we've not done that one yet. It's a no.
You think they'll be ready for Football Friday?
I think, I think both, both of them will be ready for Football Friday. Yes. Yes.
The next Friday.
And the next Friday. And the next Friday. The next Friday. Yep, yep.
Committee reports. Budget, Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget committee met Monday night. We've got more money in than going out. That's always a good thing, so. We approved the following appropriations.
There you go.
There they are. 1A is additional BEP funds, $291,000. 1B is appropriating the lottery after-school programs grant, $525,363. 1C is the emergency relief 2.0 remaining balance, $5,020,095.85. 1D is a new grant epidemiology and laboratory capacity, $1,680,523.65. 1E is appropriate additional revenues from the Child Nutrition Program. This is a combination of grants and rebates and other federal monies, $451,566. 1F is to appropriate head start cost of living increase or adjustment funds, $30,897. 1G is the early head start cost of living adjustment funds, $17,411. 1H is the appropriate the COVID American Rescue Plan grant money. That's a head start grant, $530,104. So these have all been approved by the budget committee and forwarded to the full board for approval, and I so move.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Bale?
Aye.
Mr. Gillan Waters?
Aye.
Mr. McCamey? Ms. Portwood? Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Dr. Burrow?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We also approve the following transfers. 2A is extension of the free meal program, $2,619,645. This means free meals for all students all year. So that's a good thing. 2B is some transferring funds for increased indirect costs, $3,463. 2C is increase in utility costs. These are head start funds, these three, $190, and transferred increase indirect cost, $36 is the last transfer. We also approved, yeah, we approved a request from Clinton High School to repair some damage in their band room and the cleaning of all the band uniforms. So that was $6,998.12. So those are the transfers. They've been approved by the budget committee, recommended to the full board, and I so move.
Move second approve the transfers 2A through 2D plus Clinton High School. Discussion. If done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. For the new board members, we meet Monday night for committee meetings. It's where we hash this stuff out. We spent a lot of Monday tonight, but we go over it seriously on Monday night. You all are welcome to come anytime for the committee meeting. We, we have to have roll call votes on all appropriations. We do not have roll call votes on transfers. So if there's any question what we're doing, then... Was it, that it, Scott?
That's it.
Okay. Policy committee.
Thank you, Dr. Burrow. The policy committee also met on Monday night, and we had several policies that we discussed in depth, and I will go over the list. 3.220 access to private facilities. 4.205 enrollment in advanced courses. 4.206 homebound instructions. 4.301 interscholastic athletics. 4.605 graduation requirements. 4.700 testing programs. 5.106 application employment. 5.802 qualifications and duties of the director of schools. 6.200 attendance. 6.319 alternative education. And 6.402 physical exams. And the committee recommended approval on the first and final reading, and I so move.
Let me get this up for you, that way it'll be a little bit easier.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the policies mentioned. Discussion.
I would like to clarify on the graduation requirement. There was a question that came up about the valedictorian and salutatorian, and this was the last year they would be identified as valedictorian and salutatorian, starting in this graduating class, 2022. They will go with the Latin honorific designations.
Other discussion. Doc, all in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries.
Approval of the life...
Prove the life skills classroom is...
Dr. Burrow, that, that came from me. That was one of the proposals. What, what we were asking is that the school board allow us to enter into, to get a, to get an architect to come in and look and see what it would take to redo one of the classrooms at CRCS, to be able to house a life skills classroom that would have a stove, refrigerator, it would have a washer and dryer, it would have everything they needed to, to live independently. And so what this is, is just allowing us to do that, and then we will bring the final cost back to you and ask for your approval. And I'll bring back where we're gonna get those funds from at some point.
But we don't need to take action till we get a proposal.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's just, I think it was just getting your blessing, knowing it's going that way. And when we do that, we'll bring that back to the building and grounds committee.
You're gonna take an existing classroom that we already have?
Yes, yeah, existing classroom, yes. It was a science lab that we're not using now, yes.
The other item that was added to the agenda is discussion of the mask program.
Thank you, Dr. Burrow. This has been a sore spot. A lot, a lot of people, not, not just school board, but, and different districts, they're all having, we're all having the same problems. But we do need to address the problem. Everything you see on the news says it's gonna get worse before it gets better. So we need a plan. And I've been in discussions with, with Dr. Parrott all week, and I know he's, he's been looking at things and, and trying to come up with some things, and I know probably the other board members have as well. So I'm gonna make a motion that we allow Dr. Parrott and his staff to come up with a proposal to, to, for the mask mandate that may take effect. And hopefully he would use what some of the other local districts are doing and address it as student, staff, and to come up with this proposal, initiate it, and if we got a problem with it, take it up in September and, and try to, otherwise give him authority to do it. He doesn't have the authority to, to issue a mask mandate. He doesn't have it unless we give it to him. So I think we should do that and adopt this proposal in advance, so that we can, we can have something in our hands.
You make that in?
That's, that's motioned. We, we instruct Dr. Parrott to come up with a solution.
I'll second that motion. Okay, well, I was, I was going to, this is one of the places that Tim and I have been on different sides of the fence, and I think a lot of it, you all understand where I'm coming from.
Yes, Jeff.
It's, it's different when you're looking at it, you know. But I think Tim has talked to the people in Oak Ridge. He came up with a plan. I think the letter he's sending out to the staff and the, and the parents and everybody is, it was an excellent idea. And I think at least this is a starting place to go, and we can, we can make adjustments as we go down the road.
Yeah, Dr. Burrow, I've worked with, I've worked with the leadership team since you all talked to this on Monday night, and, and I think that, and I do think that, working with you, I think this is a good plan that would say that we don't, we just don't arbitrarily do a mask mandate, but when a school exceeds 2% positive rate, then we would, we would send an email out to parents and everybody, and we would alert them that for the next 10 days that we would be mask requirement in that school, and then if that positive rate dropped down below 2%, then we would, then that mask mandate would go away. But, but I do think we, we want to do what's best for our students and our staff and everything. And I think some of our cases, some of our schools last year, we didn't have hardly any cases, but some of them had a lot of cases. So this allows us, this would allow me to make that decision along with Catherine, our nurse manager, our nurse director, and, and along with other people in the community or health department. And, and I, again, I, our, our staff worked hard on this, and I believe it's a good plan.
And you will keep us informed daily on the numbers?
Yes.
And we'll know?
Yes.
Board members?
Yes.
And I, I think that's important, that the board know what's going on on a daily basis, and that we do the tracking of the policies. Because we can't only worry about the students, we gotta worry about those that they've exposed.
Yes. And we are, we're doing, we are doing contact tracing right now. We're doing testing in our schools. We have a, we have an actual clinic planned for any student or, or employee that wants it. September, the second, third, and, second and third. And so we've got right now, how many students signed up for that? We've got about 60 students signed up for that. And, and we want, we want to make it, we want the decision to be theirs, but at the end of the day, you all have made me director of schools to do what's best for every student every day, and some of these decisions are gonna be hard to make. But, but I've told my staff and I've told my teachers, and I tell everybody, when I make a decision that's based on what's best for a student, it's easy to defend.
I think it's, it's good to have a number. Just to arbitrarily shut down the system is harmful, but to not shut down a school that's flaming with this stuff is harmful. And so if, if we have a magic number, and, and there's not really a real one, but you've chosen one, and I think it's, other districts are using as well. I think, I think we all can suffer through this.
Yeah, I'm scared to death that it's getting, gonna get worse before it gets better. Anybody in the audience wants to address the mask thing?
Hello, my name's Chris Fox.
Would you identify yourself?
My name's Chris Fox.
Okay.
I've got a daughter that attends school here. I think it's really unfortunate that you guys kind of sneak under the radar here with this. You know, you've got an agenda online. Sounds like you've got a letter, so you kind of had a plan. You could've let people know. I think that's really kind of, just really unfortunate for you guys, just to sneak in here at the last minute and then not only discuss it, but vote on it. Not just, hey, make an exit, we should, you know, and then inform the public to come in here and get our opinions. I think that's very poor judgment on everybody's part. There was no risk to kids from this, no greater than the flu. There hasn't been. There's no data that shows that. So to, to call something out, this year, there's no greater risk than there has been in any other previous year. If you're an adult, get a vaccine if you want to. It's, they're still proven effective even against the Delta variant. I actually sent you guys an email today earlier thanking you for, you know, kind of going slow and actually following the data. It doesn't seem that that's the case anymore. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Staff, I guess, is comfortable with it. Very good.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of questions and clarifications. The 2% would include not only students, but also staff and custodial staff and administration that are on campus, is I understand it.
Yes, yeah, yes.
And then the 10 days or until the percentage goes down, that would be whichever comes last. I assume it's gonna be 10 days, no matter what.
Yeah, it'll be at least 10 days.
Yeah, yeah. I, I like this, I'm like Mr. McCamey. I think it does follow numbers, it follows the data that, that we have in our schools. It's not across the board thing. If there's not a problem in a school, there's no mask mandate. But if there is a problem, I think we are, well, more than just obligated to take care of that, of those students. So I think this is a good compromise from a total mask mandate, and I think it makes a lot of sense.
I agree with Scott on it. I said it, you know, we're looking at it school to school, and we're getting numbers every day, and it's hard choices when you're up here. I don't think there's any board members that's up here that don't want safety for all of our students and our teachers. That's an ultimate thing. But I think this is a good compromise, and I think that Dr. Parrott will do everything he can to make sure our students are safe, along with the board.
I think if we vote on this to approve it, it shows us that we do have confidence in our director's decision, and he will make it in the best interest of the students and staff.
I agree, Joe.
Thank you, Tim, for the letter.
Yeah, and once you approve it, I will send it out tomorrow.
Has everybody had a copy of the letter? We need a motion to approve the letter and...
That's, we've got a motion on the floor to give him the authority to take what steps for the next term.
That includes sending out the letter, okay. Motion made seconded, discussion? Not? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Anything else to come before the board?
Pam, we meet again before we go on to district meeting, don't we?
Yeah, it's not till the 28th.
Yeah, and Pam sent you all something about the November... Yeah, and Pam sent you all something about the November meeting to make sure that if you were going, they're going to make us pay for it early because I think people drop out and things like that. So if you know you're going to be there, you're not going to be able to go, let her know so she can take that off and we don't have to pay that, because it, it takes us about nine months to get that funds back the last time.
Where, where does it take place this year, Dr. Parrott?
It's Aubreland Hotel.
Oh, okay, the main, okay.
Yes, the main one.
Anything else?
Hopefully they'll have it. You know, when they keep canceling all their events, it's kind of hard to get your levels in, you know?
And the fall district meeting is going to be live and virtual.
Yes.
So it's, there's two options there.
And I, and I plan on taking advantage of that one. I'll get you all the information we'll leave here.
I think that was what I meant. Where is, where is the district meeting?
It's in Jefferson City. Jefferson City. Jefferson County High School, I think.
I hope we don't have to get into anything virtual right now.
Me too.
We're going to keep our students in school.
Linda?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Sorry we couldn't wait.
I was in Knoxville and got tired of it.
Uh, we understand.
You're just in time to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
You got here just in time. We adjourned.